So I I am calling the meeting to order. We have four members. Virginia Bovoli. Sharon Plowich. Gene Baldwin.
That's my daughter.
And me, Liam Curran. Terry Baldwin. And and. And Jennifer Tiso skin. Skin Tiso, excuse me. The senior center director. So first step, let's let's first take a step back from where we had our meeting in earlier in the month and let's just, if you haven't already, you should have been able to, you know, you should have the minutes from our December 2nd meeting. And I'd like us to. You know, if we have any questions on those minutes. Let's raise them, or if not, can I have a motion to? Accept those minutes.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Oh, second.
All right, and all in favor of accepting the minutes for the December 2nd 2021 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous. Let's get rid of that. Now, we we really, I'm just gonna read what we have here in the agenda. Jennifer had added this because technically, we we met, but it's not an official meeting in December, in January and January 6th. So. We we had a conversation regarding capital expenditures, the need for building repairs specifically regarding the the need to replace and repair the roof. The board. The members at present supported Jen's request by a three to nothing vote, bringing the subjects to the board to select them for their approval within the town's annual capital improvement budget. And we noted that the expenditure had been projected as potential capital expenditure request in next year, 2022, 23's budget. But the the conditions are such that it can't wait till the next fiscal year. And note that this that this is all that we discussed at the meeting, and we decided we would need to convene a special meeting to have our regular budget discussion for 2223. So is there, is there, are there any questions concerning that?
No.
And and Jennifer, I'm I'm curious. I'm not sure if we even really needed to give you a vote on that. Because that's a, that's a town capital expenditure that is not part of our budget.
Correct.
And what was there, I mean, certainly are saying, yes, if the roof's damaged, the board feels we should get it repaired.
Yeah.
Thing, but what what was the town's reaction to that?
Um, they were. Under, I mean, they understood it. They knew it was coming. It was on, it was on the deferred maintenance plan. And so it wasn't unexpected. I think they knew that the the roof was kind of at the very end of its life cycle. But certainly, you know, leaks and things like that push it forward. So they were. I spoke with Kim Behren. She was very grateful that I reached out to Chris and and had him come out and look at it and get a quote. And that's kind of where we left it. So I don't know at what point they are going to, I think Patrick has to talk to. And pull a permit of appropriateness and go talk to the historical commission. Take them, I guess, paperwork from Chris. They all know Chris. They were very happy when I mentioned his name, when I called, when I spoke with Wendy. And we'll see if it can happen sooner rather than later. I know that after April, he told me that he's gonna be very busy and tied up for several months after that. So I'm hoping, you know, once there's like a break, maybe, you know, March, you know, when when it's not snowing to beat the bands and and all that, that, you know, he'll be able to come out and 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 kind of do it. And and there you are.
There she is.
Excuse me, Jennifer, I called the Calvary. My my grandson came here and I had the camera covered.
Oh, nice.
Okay. I didn't even know there was such a thing. Okay.
I've done that before. It's, yeah, it's a funny discovery.
I'm sorry. I texted my grandson and said, somebody come help.
With the with the snow that's sitting on the roof, are you seeing continued leaking? Or is it?
Actually.
What's going on?
Actually, no, I know that. Part of it was patched by. Jim Moker. When he came out to paint, and he noticed that there was like, they were missing, you know.
Tiles.
Jingles and all that. So I think he did, he did a a patch job. And it's, it seems to be holding. I I haven't seen upstairs. Any new leaks. So I mean, that's good. Maybe, maybe that's, yeah.
That probably wouldn't happen until it starts melting.
Pardon?
That probably wouldn't start happening until it starts melting, as far as the leaks go.
Yeah. Well, no, I think I think you really should just, you know, try to check it daily. And if we start seeing return to water, or if we start getting water inside, then I think the town should know that, you know, a tarp should probably be put over it.
Yeah, and and really, the culprit is that cupola. I mean, because the cupola is open. And I think that's where a lot of the water and a lot of the damage is coming in through that area. That's where the leak is. And. We don't even really need a cupola. I had Patrick come look at it, and that's what he told me. He said, you know, the ridge vent that runs along is enough for circulation.
Well, you know, you're talking about the historic district, you're talking about a cupola that's probably been there for 100 years.
Yeah.
So you might have a little problem with that. It's most likely, you know, that the you know, what's that, the? You know, when the copper flash, the flashing. Probably under bad repair.
Yep.
And there's other things they could do to remediate it, but I would think to, you know, I would think the historic commission would have a hard time removing that cupola.
Move it. Patrick suggested taking plywood or 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 the like, painting it black and going and putting it around the interior so it seals off those vents from the outside.
Sure.
I mean, that way you don't have to worry about, you know.
Yeah, yeah, we don't need, we don't need what the, you meant what we don't, we don't need the cupola's functioning reasons to be for to exist, but the cupola, it's up, okay. Just wanted to be sure we weren't talking about.
Oh, no.
All right. So so I don't believe we have to vote on the, excuse me. The report I just made on on the meeting in the sixth. Really more for you to to, you know, be informed of. Or reminded of what we discussed and that we continue discussions. All right, so let's, let's get to the, you know, the major, the major event here.
Just one, just one second, if I could, Jen, what's the, what's the next step with that roof then?
I have to wait for, I think, Patrick to pull a certificate of appropriateness from the historic commission, and he has to go for a hearing. And they need to approve it. And then we can get Chris on it. But I think it being Chris Demir's anyway, because he's done so many of theirs, he's even, I think he even did Wendy's at her house, which is right next door to the senior center. They were very, she was very happy when I mentioned his name. So I think that that will help us tremendously in being able to push this through and get it done.
Okay, thank you. I was just just wondering.
Also.
I have a question that I was wondering too. Now, in a big job like painting, like the roof, are there any regulations with the town that it has to be bid on? For more than one contractor?
You, the roof?
Yeah, I mean, delay for to to compare prices.
They might have to put it out to bid. I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is, at this point, this is strictly a town.
Yep.
You know, capital expenditure thing that is kind of out of our hands. I think they have to, you know, they got to have a procedure in in place that they'll just follow. You know, for example, I don't know if they put out to bid on the paint job.
Yes.
Did they? Yeah, so they probably, they probably have to do it and everything. So, you know, they like Chris, that's fine. You know, it's not up to, you know, they'll, they'll work it out as far as what they have to do, and they'll hire who who they wish, who they have to hire.
Okay.
I mean, you know, Chris is fine for the, for the members of the commission, but in the end of the day, it's a pretty, it's a pretty simple job. You know, it, it, there's not a lot of historical accuracy that we have to deal with, as long as we're not doing any changes, physical changes. You know, even.
Red roof or anything like that, so.
Yeah, yeah, if it stays the same kind of roof, I don't think there's any reason to for us to want to change that, you know, and I I just think we, the the town will will do its due diligence and they'll select a product that is, you know, gonna hopefully last for 30 to 50 years. You know.
My suggestion, I had him do 25, or no, 30, 50, and metal.
Yeah.
Historically accurate.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, we'll see, but you know, they'll, they'll. I would suspect they probably won't want to do the metal. They could have something that lasts for 30 years or 50 years, and it'll still be cheaper than metal, most likely.
Okay.
Oh, you're frozen, Bill.
Yes. The wonders of Zoom. The wonders of the internet and our wifi.
Yeah. Oh, we lost him.
Oh, he's gone.
He'll be back.
I'm sure. Well, I'm glad at least you got Patrick out there and that you're in the process, Jen, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whatever they do, they do. It's now up to them. Them being the town. There he is.
Okay, so let's see how many times we go through that. Each of us goes through that. Back there in that darkness. Okay, so let's just, you know, as we.
Shoot. Oh, Bill.
Oh, boy.
You're stuck again.
And it isn't. Who, I'm stuck?
Yeah, we're stuck, yep.
You, you are stuck.
Still stuck?
Kinda. Your video's on a delay.
It might. No, well. Let's see.
Oh, now it's Virginia.
Let me try a little bit longer, but.
Yeah. Well, your top picture isn't, but the bottom one is, yeah.
They only see me up on top.
You're not stuck to me, Virginia.
Ah, I see Tony.
Am I? Am I back?
You're back.
Okay.
Bill's stuck.
Not Bill's stuck. Yeah, now Bill's gone.
Oh, this is.
It'd be a very long meeting.
Oh, he's moving, yay. If, maybe if he just did audio, no video. Well, we're in Roxbury. You know, anything happens here with this wifi. Yeah.
Hold on.
Okay.
Am I back in play?
Yes, you are.
All right. When in doubt, try to get closer to the router.
Oh.
I guess that's the, that's the business. All right.
Even know where my router is. Not a surprising statement, but.
Hopefully, I won't need any of the other information.
There you go. You're there.
Okay.
Before it goes.
So. So again, this is, this is basically commentary Jen's request for monies. We all should have the. Oops, hold on, there was another piece of paper I needed, darn it. All right, well, we're gonna have to live without it, I think. So here is, oh. No, hold on. I hate when this happens. Hold on, it's gonna take me a second.
We'll wait for you, Bill.
Well, no, I thought I had all the information I wanted. Okay. Okay. All right, so senior center hourly, those are monies paid to the secretary, ha ha. To take minutes at the senior center board of directors meetings, prepare them for approval and so forth. Is an item that we don't have any
Control.
Control over. Looks like it is set at $4,500. And, you know, my only question on this is that we've spent half of the budget on this already. And it's a little confusing because we don't do anything in July and August.
Right, right.
So. You know, I'm just not sure what they, you know, and we have that ledger that Jen sent us, and it, it seems kind of inconsistent in terms of what. You know, it's, it's hard to make head or tails of it. But, you know, I think we just need to approve it. But I think more than anything else, we actually need to have a secretary.
I agree.
Me too. Where are we in that process? Do we know?
Yeah, I actually do know. So Barbara, this is how it went down. It was very informal. It took her a long time to have my letter ready. And so I gave notice, accepted the position, gave notice, and then she came to my house one night and said, and by the way, here's your paperwork. Sorry, it's so late. And by the way, you're gonna be taking the notes, the meeting minutes for the board of directors. And I was like, ah. I can't tell you what I said, but anyway, so that we left it at that. So I was like, okay, you know, whatever, I I can write down minutes. That's not hard. I didn't realize it was going to be, I was gonna be the secretary, I was gonna be in charge of, you know, all this other kind of stuff. And but she did put it, she did put it in my, in my a caveat to my hiring letter. And there is a caveat that says, you know, but we do want for the success. So if this needs to be changed, it can be changed. So there we are. That's, that's the get out of jail free card. That is, you know, but Jimmy has nothing to do with that. It's something that I have to speak with Patrick to change or to fix or what have you. I I do, I, I asked Jimmy who, how other boards were handling it, and I think other boards have replacements. I I heard that, and I don't, I don't know if this is just hearsay, or if this is actually what's happening, but Aaron Josephson is doing the, the meeting minutes for the library. You know, I don't know who's doing what for everybody else. I I don't, I don't know if Julie stepped down from everything or just certain certain aspects of it. But that's something I have to speak with Patrick about.
Okay, well, well, here's the thing. To me, if they're putting $4,500 in our budget, they should use $4,500 of our budget for what it's there for. And it specifically says, pay the secretary to take minutes, senior center board of directors meetings.
So I agree. I totally agree.
So it's one or the other. If they're gonna make you do it, either they have to make some deal to you to to pay for that. I don't like that you would have to do it because I'd like you to pay attention to what we're doing and not be.
Exactly.
You know, trying to be accurate, particularly when, you know, someone like me mumbles or something like that.
Well, it's hard since then it's, and you're part of the meeting.
Right, right. That's why you have secretaries.
Right.
So. You know, but the other side of the coin is, then it, then the $4,500 shouldn't be in the budget. Because we shouldn't be taking taxpayers' money for something that we're not using.
Right.
So, so again, Jennifer, I mean, I think you, you have to, you know, this is an employee employer issue. I think you have to just clarify, try to clarify your stuff. You could certainly, it's gonna be part of this meeting recording, if anybody wants to see it. But that we, generally speaking, agree as a board that you know, if if money is being included in our budget, it should be used for what it is being included for.
Yes, I I think we need a secretary. Yeah, it really has to be determined, one way or the other, for sure. Is there gonna be a secretary or not? And there, there should be a secretary, and they should have, shouldn't have just left it. And if there isn't a secretary, why not, when everybody else, everyone, every other board has a secretary? Why would we not have a secretary after all these years?
I I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if it was a budgetary thing. I don't know, I don't know how many other boards are are taking their own minutes or or have still, or have a replacement secretary. I really, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. I would just be, I would just be interested as to why Barbara, when she talked to you about the position or whatever, you know, specifically addressed the secretary. And that, you know, at least the taking of notes, and that you would be the taking of notes. Why?
I, I don't know, I.
I know you don't know, but I'm just, you know, thinking out loud, why would?
Right. Well, if you want to conjecture, if we want to conjecture, part of it probably possibly was, they knew they were using, gonna be losing Julie, and there might have been a need to, how to manage in the interim, and it wasn't gonna be Barbara's decision. So that that may have been part of, part of the issue, but that's just guessing. Again.
Maybe that's something, Bill, that maybe Barbara or someone should have talked to at least you about. You know, as the chairman of the board, say, listen, as of such and such a date, whatever, this change is gonna be made, you know?
Right. You know, but I I never would would think it was part of a permanent arrangement. You know. I mean, I can understand it being a temporary thing.
Right.
You know, and and some of it might have also been at the time, that, you know, perhaps there was some concern about, you know, the fact that, that we were raising a salary. But, you know, I think that goes, that that doesn't matter, you know, it's a, it's a probably a three hour a month or more job. Probably, probably three hours realistically, but it's probably a three hour a month job with all the things you have to do. And again, it appears that we have, you know, I mean, we're only doing it 10 months. If it's three hours a month, we're only doing it for 10 months. I'm sure we're not paying $150 and, you know, you know, an hour for that.
Right.
I hope not, certainly hope not, because I'll stop doing what I'm doing, and I'll take notes for every board.
I think, I think I can't, I can't really speak for Barbara, but knowing that probably this happened late in the game, and she said, okay, well, let me, let me find a temporary fix. I think that's why that caveat is there and in in that part of the hiring letter. And, you know, it was just, you know, she wasn't at that point, I think, with, you know, zero hours left. Going to then hire, you know, their secretary or whatever, I mean, you know, and and I think that's what that was about. I think you're right, completely right about that.
Yeah, you know, I just think it's probably just transitional stuff, and I'm sure Patrick will straighten it out. Again, my sense on it though really comes back to, if it's in the budget, we should use it. If we're not using it, or if it's not needed for our, for our purposes, if there's a change in the way we want to do things, that has to be, you know, expressly told to you and probably to us, but that money shouldn't be in the budget. Or if it's gonna be in the budget, it should be someplace else where we can actually use it for the betterment of our, of our subscribers.
Yeah, I wouldn't give it up.
Who does the hiring of that person?
Oh, I'm sure it would probably be Patrick.
Yeah, it would be through the Cyclones office. I'm sure all, all HR is managed through the.
Okay.
Right, I mean. Okay, so in the senior center salary, we have no impact on that. You know, and I know we've expanded the hours and so forth, so so that's great, as best we can, of course, right now, given all the conditions that we're, we're faced with. And I don't, you know, we'll, we'll go over what unless there's something of urgency, which we could do it at the end of the meeting. But as I said earlier, we can go over those reports on status and so forth at our next meeting. Heating and fuel. We're recommending an increase of $3,500 about 50% to 11,000. At the moment, we're at 7,500. For six months, we've spent 2,300 of that. I I don't know, I mean, are we, are we, you know, a 50% increase where I look at the budget right now and we're kind of you know, we're going into the coldest time of year, but we still have $5,000 in there. And I'm sure every time we're filling up, it's a, it's a $1,000 fill up.
Right.
Probably, right? So. You know, we've always been robust in our, in our oil expenditures. You know, I think 35 might be a little high. But, you know, I mean, that, at 2,500, it'd still be a, a third increase over what we're spending, but I guess we're hearing that everything is going up in price, so. You know, I I could certainly live with this increase if everybody else is okay with that.
Yep, I can.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess so. Do we have a contract, like, do we log into, lock into a price like we can at home? Or do we just pay whatever market price is the day the delivery is made?
I actually have no idea.
I believe, I believe the town has a, has an agreement because we buy an awful lot of fuel.
I would think it'd be in the co-op that we, I'm in, and that they instigated, I don't know, about four year, four or five years ago, the co-op, and you join and to get a better price.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure that, I'm sure the town leverages, you know, their buying power. You know, I don't know who buys for the school, you know, the school's probably the board of education, not town. But I would, I would assume the library, I would assume us, I would assume town hall are all under the same contract, and they've gotta be, you know, doing a couple thousand gallons a, a week, I mean, a fill up.
Oh, sure. Oh, sure.
We probably get a pretty good.
Okay.
And honestly, when I when I did this part of the budget, um, it was at a time when. Uh, that was right before the coil broke in the furnace. And so we um. We had that actuator that was uh unbeknownst to us staying open for whatever reason, whether it was an animal. Or what have you, um, and and the actuator is that vent that closes. Uh, or that it closes damper from uh the outside air. And we use it when we have it open, when we cook in the kitchen because our. Um, our vent is so strong, it creates a vacuum, so that helps to mitigate that. When that's open. And so unfortunately, um, the mechanism that keeps that open and closed. Was on its way out and we had no idea. And it ended up staying open that night that it was really painfully cold, but it was it was actually on its way out. That's why the. I couldn't regulate the temperature in the building. That's why the, you know, Mike was coming over and he couldn't regulate the temperature in the building. Um, we couldn't figure out what the heck was going on. There was no indicator that it was the actuator. You know, we had no way of really knowing. And um, that night it got really cold. It got stuck. On the open position and I walked into the into the center and my office was thirty seven degrees. And so I knew something was, this is something that's not, this is not an open window, this is not a leaky window. Um, I went downstairs to the basement and the um thermostat. Um, had no had no power to it, had uh nothing. It was it had a gray screen, nothing, nothing was there. I couldn't change the temperature at all. So immediately I called town hall, I called for Mike. He came over, he, we opened up all of the all of the doors and um, you know, he started turning on all of the. Um, extra um vents that we had and um. He worked on it for about an hour and a half and just couldn't figure it out. And then all of a sudden, he's heard water. And by the time he turned around. Um, there was already about an inch of water on the ground. I mean, that's how much water was just pouring out of the furnace. And so he shut the water off, came upstairs and got me. And um, we put a call into Good Hill and Good Hill um was very good. Uh, they they figured it out. Um, they opened up um part of the ventilation, found all of this debris inside. You know, like where an animal had gotten in and all of that kinda stuff. And we don't know if that's what did it or, you know, who knows?
Don't we, don't we, if don't we have that furnace inspected every year?
Yes, but there's no way, there was no way of knowing, you know, what, because it wasn't the furnace, it was the actuator. That caused all this hullabaloo and and um. It froze.
Do we have that contract with?
Good Hill.
So they're the ones that do the.
Yes.
Inspection every year.
Yes. And.
All right, well, I think next year when you do the inspection, you should say to him, hey, guys, take a very close inspection. I don't, I don't like the way it kinda sounds.
And.
You know, it sounds like, it sounds like there wasn't necessarily a a really good inspection because. You know, you if if the thing's not opening up, you should know, I have a pro- I had a problem in my place. My guy, when he came from Hoffman, told me, yeah, this is going on and you're gonna have to. Either I could fix it or you can get somebody else to fix it. And I knew Hoffman would, you know, charge me an arm and a leg because it wasn't covered in my, in my um. You know, in my deal with them, so I brought in somebody that I knew that I knew wouldn't be as crazy. But that's a function of the machine.
Yeah.
So, you know.
This 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 deep freeze ended up freezing the water in the furnace. Which, when everything started to warm back up, um snapped the coil. And so they could either remove the entire furnace or um and. And they looked for a replacement coil and there really wasn't one, um. They ended up finding one somewhere else and they said, but or, you know, uh, we could try to solder this thing and 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 put it together. And so they ended up doing that and it worked. And um Mike. Yeah, Mike came down and inspected it and said it it was, it's good, it looks like it's gonna last.
Who came down and inspected it?
Um, Mike, he is uh one of our town guys and and this is what he does.
Okay, all right, fine, fine.
And.
Hopefully it'll work, but hopefully then hopefully when they do with their inspections, you know, they'll. You know, maybe maybe it was easy to miss, or maybe it was impossible to catch. But we do have a contract with them to inspect it and, you know, we certainly do that to avoid this kinda stuff. How much, how much was the?
The bill? I have no idea. And it's not really all, it's not a hundred percent repaired, so they are, they are looking for a part. To fix the actuator or replace the actuator. Um, and until that happens, they've closed off the damper to the outside, which means that we can't really.
You know, good for sure.
You know, like cook, yeah, we can't cook in the kitchen and and turn the vents on, so I'm glad that there's no soup.
Yeah.
But I mean, you know, I really walked into the money pit. It's really, that's just how it's going. So um, when I, when I did this. It was because um, at that time, I was having to turn the heat up to eighty degrees. I was having to keep all of the. Other um, uh, 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 uh. Heaters on. Um, we had to get space heaters. It was, it was so. And and it was, it was random, you know, um, I would call and say it's freezing in here and they'd go and turn up the heat and. You know, it would, it would last for a little bit and then it would get cold again. And, you know, it was just this very strange um course of events. You know, that just, it was the actuator. So. They are going to have to replace that. So, you know, the drama's not over, but certainly it's warm in the building now. But when I came up with, you know, that increase, it was one because I know that, you know, oil is gonna do nothing but increase in price. And um, I was really concerned at that point how much oil we were going through. I mean, because we had to keep it on, you know, day and night.
Yeah.
Yes, if 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 the if the board is.
No, listen, it's it's only gonna go up. It's not gonna get any cheaper. Hopefully you'll be, we'll, as as COVID gets, um. Maybe less uh Berlin will be staying open longer, more hours, more use. So thirty five hundred dollars is 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 fine. We we've actually, we're in a cheap period of oil. And we we, if you look at our our ins and outs on that oil prices, we've always been a little bit under. So, you know, there there won't be as much going into the rainy day fund. Um, anyway, uh, but we certainly don't wanna be under in that area. Yeah, I think, I think with the extended hours. And with, um, again, with with costs rising, you know, to create energy. Um, a thousand dollar increases, you know, is probably something that that we should do, maybe it may, and that's probably a minimum. You know, that's, that's. You know, that's twelve percent. I mean, you know, we've only used two thirds, but you're still not using all the. You know, you're not, you're not using the place, you don't have the lights on in the place forty hours a week, right? Right now?
Hmm, no, but we we are, we are nine to four. And we also stay open that extra hour at night, so I'm actually there from on Mondays from nine in the morning until. Uh, six thirty, seven at night.
So hopefully the thousand dollars you request will will cover us, but that's fine.
Yeah.
I think, um, up to you guys, any?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I'm a fan of heat.
We're talking about light now.
Yeah, 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 I'm a fan of electricity too.
Yeah.
You know, uh, uh. You know, the the phone is um, three hundred bucks more, I mean, you know, phone, phones tend to stay the same. Um, you know, I mean, it, you know, hopefully they go down over time, but. Um, what do, I mean, wh- wh- why do you, why do you recommend the, you know, essentially, what's that, an eight percent increase for phones?
It, because actually, um, that was a. When Linda did this budget, um, it, the price had gone up. Um, since since she did the budget from last year. So I was concerned that that was going to happen to us, you know, we're currently paying a two sixty nine sixty two, which is like thirty two, thirty five a year. Um, I just, um. I just figured, you know, if it ends up going up or or we get stuck, but I mean, if you guys are 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 okay. Um, with uh. Thirty five hundred, I'm I'm okay with staying at thirty five.
I mean, do we have a contract?
Yeah, we do.
And is that contract, say, we pay two sixty nine sixty two a month for the next twelve?
Yes, that's how I came up with with that number. Um, that's how I knew that it had increased since the last time um the budget, uh.
Right, because you have a ten, you have a ten percent buffer in there, you know, almost already. You know, even if you leave it alone. So, you know, I think, I think we should leave that at thirty five hundred.
Okay.
Anybody else, please weigh in.
Yeah, I think so. If you have a contract, you know, then it's good till next year, at least.
You know, and given, and given what you were talking about with the maintenance issues that you're facing and and some of the, you know, damage that occurred. Um, you know, due to the flooding and so forth, you know, I I think. We'd be foolish to not add money for the um. For, you know, just maintenance and repairs. Again, if 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 we are, if we are under in that number, uh, you know, the town will re- will will put it someplace else.
Yes, yes.
You know, that, you know, but but we might as well be be, you know, covered for that. Cleaning supplies.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, Jen, on this cleaning, uh, it says it's gonna be increased to from seventy to seventy eight dollars a week to ninety to a hundred and twenty a week. Um, why, why do you feel that needs to be increased?
Well, I I know the person who cleans our building. And um, and right now, twenty dollars is 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 really low and um.
Twenty, a hundred and twenty.
She, well, she's going to ask for an increase in in pay. She will, yeah, she'll probably get it. And if she does, and then our uh cleaning service will increase.
She gets twenty dollars an hour for cleaning and that's how you got the seventy to eighty dollars per week?
Yes, absolutely.
But now she's gonna go up to twenty five or thirty dollars?
Yes, she's, she's going to ask for thirty. Which is, which is the going rate.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm not, I'm not questioning.
No, I I just, I figured if she ended up getting it, well, she probably will.
Yeah.
And let's hope because she's, she is really good. Then that's, that's what it's going to cost us.
Okay, and the carpets get cleaned once a year and it's six hundred dollars?
Yes. That's what, that's what Linda had quoted, um, and it's Stanley Steamer that comes in and does it.
Okay. And you had, do you have a price for the window cleaning in the spring?
Um, no, I don't. I don't have that. That that came from a. Linda's budget from last year. And I, I don't know who she used to uh clean the windows either, so I will, I'll have to find that out. But I didn't know at that at that particular time.
Well, why don't we throw a couple of, um, boy, we're, are we over budget for this? Oh, just because the changes have not occurred yet?
Correct.
Yeah. Well, that'll be, hopefully they won't uh accept an increase. Until next year, because, you know, we've, we've spent a, you know, we spent a a fair amount, we've.
Yes. And I, and I, you know, she needed, you know, a bunch of cleaning supplies and and things like that and so.
Wait, we had a total of thirteen hundred and sixteen for cleaning services and supplies? Or is, or our senior center outside service is somehow part of this?
Um, outside services is a is a separate line. So we have office supplies, which was um. It was originally appropriated uh in twenty one, twenty two at seven hundred. And the actual was one ninety eight, but I put it at seven, only because I've had to buy a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm I'm not talking about that.
Oh.
I'm just talking about cleaning services and supplies. Present, we are budgeted at five thousand dollars. I don't see five thousand dollars as a number in here.
Well, it was.
Year twenty one, twenty two.
Yeah, in nineteen twenty, it was five thousand, twenty twenty one was five thousand and um.
Okay, I just, I'm just looking at the, at the general ledger of what we spent so far. And it said the budget was thirteen sixty. And we've, we've spent seven twelve to date. Leaving six hundred dollars left. Um, this, you know, maybe that that was just, I don't know. It it looks like our year-to-date numbers are not in, are not aligned with what we actually budgeted.
Yeah, it does. It does, so um. You're right, it was budgeted for thirteen sixty. I think that was COVID because of COVID. And then we've used, uh.
I I mean, it, it from what you tally up here. Um, it it does not seem uh unreasonable. To um, ask for this amount. I mean, we were technically asking for two, two thousand dollars more in just the cleaning people. Uh, which is, which is, you know, it's a little more than two thousand, so that's going to, you know, be most of that five thousand dollars. That you've got in here. And it looks like, it looks like they're gonna be spending more for supplies. And and was the oven cleaning twice a year, was that um previously part of the budget?
They shouldn't need that this year, they haven't even used the oven.
Yeah, that was originally budgeted um through Linda, and I didn't wanna take that out of the budget because. Number one, I'm not sure what's gonna happen with soups on, but I didn't want to be. Um, I didn't wanna be short in that area either. I don't wanna take it out completely, even though. Um, they're on hiatus until April, so.
Right, but remember, this budget that we're looking at right now does not start until July.
Exactly, exactly.
So, you know, the things that are currently on the budget that we have have to get us through to the end of the year. Given some of the COVID things, maybe it'll, may, you know, maybe our expenditures won't be so grand. But hopefully this thing will be behind us, at least to some degree, and nor, you know, greater normalcy and more familiarity with the bug. I would suspect will at least give us the opportunity to have more, you know, to complete more of what we're trying to accomplish. So, you know, I think, I think the increase here, as I say, the way you're laying it out, it seems like that makes perfect sense. Um, to to go to seventy eight, seventy, or even to go to eight thousand, I mean.
No, Jen, when you go, when you go to the town with this budget that we agree on or whatever. Um, then they, then they fine tune it?
Oh, yeah, I have, I have no doubt that they're going to tweak this budget.
Okay.
And.
They don't, they don't just rubber stamp it, they look at.
Absolutely not. You know, I, oh, absolutely. And even though, like, um, the maintenance contracts, um, I put, you know, a general increase of ten percent. Um, because, you know, I don't know, I know, um, labor has gone up, um. So, but when I mentioned that to Kim, she said, that does seem high. Because I probably would just put three percent or five percent. She said, but we'll, you know, we can go over that later, so. Um, yeah, so I have no doubt this is going to be tweaked. Um, I, you know.
That was, that was my guess that it was gonna be tweaked, but.
Well, you know, and I think our last full year budget, and that was one of the things after Kim, I mean, after uh Jen. Did give it to me, now I don't have it back here with me, but I, it looked like, you know, our budget prior to um. The last full non-COVID year we had, we were about ninety four thousand dollar budget. Um, I think, I think the two intervening budgets have been closer to the eighties. So, you know, i- i- if we're going to go back in. So, you know, i- i- if we're going to go back in full full term, um, you know, there, there there's gonna be increases from what we've been previously seeing in our budgets.
Right.
So, you know, I, I think we have to be cognizant of what we really need. And, you know, in some regards, um, you know, some of, you know, we'll just, let's just be, let's just continue on and try to, um, um, you know, continue to be cognizant of, of, of the things we need to do.
Yeah, absolutely. Now, these maintenance contracts, are those done through the town? The town negotiates those maintenance contracts?
Uh, yes, I, I, it is my understanding that they do. Um, I I think they kind of, they go with all state fire suppression. That's kind of these are the vendors that they use and they can use them consistently. So I think that that's kind of, you know, um, how they how they handle that. Um, I don't know if any of these, you know, would ever change, or if they did, how that would happen, um.
But that would happen through the town and not through you or.
That would not be through me. I would not be negotiating any of that.
Okay, okay.
I mean, certainly I could get, you know, price quotes, which, you know, I've done, or, uh, something like that, but ultimately that's, you know.
They do it.
They do it.
Yeah, and they should. No, I don't have any problem, you know, any question with that. I just thinks that's something they should handle since they have furnaces everywhere and, you know, elevators and whatever. Excuse me. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. Postage, you want?
For the senior center.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, but they're negotiated by the town.
Yeah, yeah. There's no, no discussion. There are really ways, you don't want to cut anything that has to do with fire or safety issues.
You know, I mean, for example, we had a very cold weekend that we used the senior center, a- and I think appropriately to, um, help people if they needed warmth. Um, things like our generator, it's real, our generator is very important to maintain. Cause basically, we have become an emergency use building in a time in history when there is going to be needs for emergency use buildings beyond the that we currently have, which is the school and the town hall. Possibly, you know, it's, it's hard to say. But that, that we have everything in good working order, you know, provided the maintenance providers do their jobs. Um, um, you know, that's, that's a pretty critical, pretty important thing for us to be able to be, to be confident in. Um, you know, a ten percent increase, you know, to me, you know, whether we're talking, uh, you know, four hundred or eight hundred dollar, you know, difference is not, you know, is not a, a big difference. You know, again, everything we're seeing is raising five percent is not what things are raising.
Right.
They go down, things may not. I doubt it. Ten things tend to not go down. So I would say a ten percent increase that you asked for. Now, was this what, was Kim saying that that seemed kind of high?
Yeah, I think when we spoke about it, she said that a ten percent increase seems a little high. Um, she might be, she might suggest three to five. Um, but she said just, she said it, it does look good. Just prepare the budget and then, you know, they'll.
I mean, my, my, my point on that is that it's a guessing game. And, uh, you know, it's fine that ten percent seems high. Meat prices seem high.
Yeah.
Cleaning lady prices seem high. And they're all going more than ten percent. So, so I would say a ten percent is, is not unreasonable.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too, but again, it's up to them, you know.
Look at what we were paying for oil last year. What are we paying for oil now? The thirty percent increase at least, minimum.
Yeah.
So, you know, ten percent, ten, ten percent is the ante. You know, it, I don't think it's, I don't think it's high at all. I think it's what, I think it's what we're seeing. Postage. This is primarily for the mailing, right?
Yes. And, um, I did speak to the post office in New Milford, which is where we have everything sent from. And they, uh, they said they're, they don't predict, um, it going up in twenty-twenty-two. Um, or it's not as of this time going to go up in twenty-twenty-two. Um, that, but that does change, um, again, in, I think August. So I'll know in August if there's going to be an increase for the rest of the year. Um.
I mean, the post office is generally much more incremental than that. Ten percent would be high for a post office increase, especially in a post office where they're trying to cut a lot out at the federal level. Um, and, and make efficiencies. I mean, you know, we're, I mean, you know, we're really not talking a lot of money here, but if we're gonna go someplace, I would say five percent would be more realistic here. Um, to be accurate, that's all, just to be accurate, and also just not be throwing ten percent bombs everywhere.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the question on this is we are still, um, sharing this with the, um, rec department. Was there during one of our conver, one of our meetings about about that not happening anymore, or us wanting to do a larger, um, um, publication of something?
Well, if we, if we decide to, um, have an insert, which is, which is front and back of a page, that won't change the postage at all. If we want to increase the size of our newsletter, we have to do it by four increments of four. So, um, that would change the mailing certainly. Um, that would change a lot. And I, I don't think we are growing, but I don't think we're there yet. And it is cheaper to put the insert in, um.
Regardless.
When we need it, when we need it. Um, I mean, I don't think I can go any lower than, you know, size ten in font. More like Braille, but, you know, it's, um, every month it's always like, okay, let me reposition less, let me, let me try this, let me try this. So we will get to a point where we will need more. And for right now, I think that purpose would be best served, um, using an insert. And, and that's just our end. Um, uh, I don't think the rec is looking to, to increase, and I don't think the library is looking to increase either. So.
Yeah.
So that would be in your printing budget there. That would be a hundred and sixty dollars a month for that two-page insert.
Mm-hmm. And if, I mean, if there were, if there was an increase, um, and I, and I did go four pages or whatever, the postage would increase, but it would, it would, from what I was told by the printers, it would stay the same if we just did an insert.
Yeah, it doesn't wait enough.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, you mean for the postage itself, but we're still talking about increasing this communication cost, uh, by a hundred percent.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, and that's, that's the cost of the insert, um, that is black and white, uh, white paper, um, front and back.
And that's every time you need it. You, you know, would it necessarily need it every month?
Um, we are, we're at the point where if I add a few more programs, we're gonna need an insert.
Okay.
We are going to need an insert.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's, we, you know, the programming will be something we have to talk about at the end of this all anyway. I guess, you know, you, we've got a you know, if, it, it, it makes no sense to do things and not communicate them. Um, I think one alternative might be, um, and I'm not saying we do that at this moment. In other words, this, this isn't a budget conversation for now. But it is a, it'll have budget impacts in the future. I think we should start, uh, because we did just invest in this, um, uh, i- i- in this new, uh, program, you know, that we approved when we had our last full meeting. Um, we should start doing more of this online. It, it's, doesn't cost anything.
The, um, newsletter?
Or inserts, special announcements. You know, I mean, at this point, at this point, this group does not, we, we need to determine how many people are actually online that would benefit from it. We assume that a lot of people that are in our, um, in our group, so to speak, our demographic, uh, aren't very, um, don't, don't really use their computers very much. And I think that's a bit of a myth now. Maybe ten years ago, it was a little different. Um, but I, but I do think that, um, that costs that are driven by paper and printing and mailing is something that, um, all businesses are getting away from. And, and we should, you know, we should just kind of start trying to collect what information we can. And are we getting to the if we're getting to ninety percent of the people, if we have the ability to get to ninety percent of the people in our group through, through electronic means, that's probably a higher open rate than people that even open the thing and don't just throw it away.
Yeah.
Because a lot of paper, that's what happens to a lot of paper.
Yep.
So, you know, to me, my, my only concern is I'm, I'm okay with the thought behind raising this by a hundred percent. Um, and something will have to go somewhere else in the budget, I'm sure. But the, the fact that there's probably a relatively substantial amount of people that just toss it away is, is something we can't control, but it is we shouldn't be spending a lot of money on that either.
That's correct.
It's just a lot of the world of paper.
You know, in Woodbury, we didn't mail them out. Uh, you could cut, you had to come into the senior center to pick them up. You could go to LaBons to get them. We dropped them off at like, uh, at, uh, different senior homes, um, but we did not mail them because it was just, it was cost prohibitive. You know, this is, this is something exclusive to, to Roxbury, you know, and we're a small enough town that we do it. But, um, certainly, um, you know, I I would hate to see half of them in the garbage can, you know? It defeats the purpose, so.
I mean, I do think, I do think people read, I certainly read it. But I'm just not sure if everybody reads it.
Yeah.
I, I read it for my reasons, and I don't even take advantage of a lot of the stuff, but I just read it because I'm curious. And, and because of my role, but I, and by the way, I think it's just while we're on the topic, I think you've really, really made it a much more exciting, readable, interesting, um, document.
Yes, I've heard, heard, me too. I agree.
You know, so, so I mean, I, I think it's, at this point in our development, it certainly has its place in its, and I think it's appropriate, given our demographic. I just think over time, we should, we should try to just, you know, with some of the other things we're doing, try to get as many of the, uh, you know, just figure out, do, do a lot of our people actually use email? And is that really the, is that a better way to go? Or I, I ask, offer people the option to opt out.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Look, I want to be on the mailing list versus, no, send me an email. You know, that would be a, a simple card to send out and, and basically say, please continue to send me a hard copy.
Yep, certainly.
We don't send them a hard copy. That means you're not reading.
Our app, we can absolutely do that. And we can, we can actually email them the newsletter.
Right. But, but I'm not saying do it now.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm just saying we should be thinking about that and you know.
Six months, eight months, yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree. Cause I think there's two camps. I think there's people who never read it, get it and put it in recycling. And then there are other people who read it every month.
Yeah.
You know, we take a look at it every month and see what's in there and, you know, all of that.
Yep. And, and I think there's some value to the fact that even if somebody doesn't read it, they're gonna see in the return envelope, you know, the, just in the a- address portion, when they flip it over at one point, they're gonna see our organization on there. So, you know, it is a subtle reminder. So, so, y- you know, I, I'm not at all against it. I just think as time goes on, and it might be, it might be two or three years, but as time goes on, we probably should.
Excuse me for yawning.
Consider. Um, okay, outside services?
I love your slow as molasses internet, Jen.
Hopefully they read that and say, oh, yeah. I mean, we are budgeted for fiber optic, so I hope, um, I hope that that happens soon, really, really, really soon. I mean, there are some days when it takes me maybe ten, fifteen minutes to get on my computer. It's just.
Why don't we, if we're budgeted for, why don't we have it?
Um, I think we're just waiting to see, um, uh, uh, all the options. I know that there's, uh, they could dig the road up.
Oh.
That's, and that's, that's the expensive version, or we could, um,
Don't they run it on telephone lines?
Well, then we could smoke and mirrors our way through, uh, the school. And, um, that would be significantly less money, but over time, would it be the best option? So I think that the powers that be are deciding which, which route to take. Um, certainly, it's not something they can do now because of the weather. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a warm weather project, so.
You're gonna have to decide if it's really necessary.
To do it, to do it the, the, the right way is gonna be about, I think, I think Jimmy said it was something like seventy thousand. But it's been, but the money's there. It's been appropriated for that, for digging the road up and all that kind of stuff. So I just, no, I don't know what option they're going to choose, but, um, yeah.
But that's out of our hands also.
That is beyond my scope.
Okay. Okay.
Our outside services?
I think that's fine. Yeah, it's fine.
Spectrum actually ended up going up, um, and it's probably gonna go up again, um.
Um, and spectrum, that's not just for, uh, internet, correct? That's for television?
Correct, that's our cable.
Okay. All right. Do we, do we, do we get our phones from them also?
Um, I'm not sure. I don't think so. I don't think so. I don't, I don't think that includes the telephone. I think that's part of, um, a, a totally separate budget, part of the town's budget. I, it.
Could be frontier.
Yeah, I don't think it includes us.
Yeah, okay. Uh, sure, um, you know, again, that's a place that they want to push back, they'll cut us back to forty-five hundred dollars.
For sure.
Yeah.
So DP support is next. And, um, Jimmy does do all of our, he checks everything, he orders everything, he finds, you know, uh, great deals, he, you know, um, but I don't know that I know, I, what I want to do is the same thing that they're doing in town hall, which is a lot of virtual stuff. And, um, I don't know what, how much that's going to end up costing us, uh, in terms of IT. And, um, if we're gonna have to be rewired or anything like that. That's why I put that little caveat in there, um.
Well, what do you mean when you say virtual stuff? I mean, like what we're doing right now?
Well, a- a- and much different than what we're doing right now. So, right now, we really don't have anything other than Zoom. And so I really wanted to be able to take all of our class and our, our classroom stuff and make it hybrid. So either you could attend in person or you could attend virtually. So there is no real reason why, you know, you can't use the center. If you choose, you know, not to be around people, that doesn't, that doesn't exclude you from taking a, an exercise class, a yoga class, um, what have you. And, and that is going to require, um, some wiring and some new equipment on our end. Um, so that we can have a, you know, TVs that kind of move around and, um, that have, uh, you know, computers on them, so that we can, uh, put an instructor in front of a television set and that person can interact, not only put an instructor in front of a television set and that person can interact not only with the instructor, but everybody else in the classroom. So it goes, it goes beyond just like zooming it in. It's, it's really kind of an interactive senior center.
Right. The only problem that I see with that is as you get into higher level technologies, you need higher technological capacity. And I mean by the individuals running it, because once you start getting into some of these things and you don't, if you don't really know how to run them, and you're going to be spending a lot of time having somebody figure out how to get it to run for you. So, you know, I would only caution that, that, you know, we just be careful about that. You know, making investment in new kinds of equipment and technologies that could wind up being, you know, could be next year's Peloton. Which is, you know, falling through the roof now. There's, it, there's a lot of Peloton garbage in people's houses right now. That they just stopped using. So, so I mean, I think you certainly should try some of these things. And see what happens, but I do think it should be somewhat slow. Because you'll learn as you go what works and what doesn't.
Yeah, I think you also have to wait, wait a little while and see how the, what the demand is for some of these things.
They think a lot of people, you know, again, we're certainly in COVID. And we're certainly hoping that, that, you know, goes away. We're not bold enough to bet on it, but we're hoping that that becomes less of an impediment on the things people want to do. But I do believe that most people want to see people. And want to, you know, our organization in many regards is a social organization, not a remote organization. So making a deep investment in continuing remote might not be our best investment because we really don't want that to be forever. We may have no choice, but, you know, so we just have to be a little cautious about that, I think.
I also wanted to be able to order a few iPads so that we can start teaching IT.
Well, we've tried that, you know, I mean, that was, that was, we set up that whole room and the other, you know, we took over the room that the Roxbury Land Trust used to have. We were, you know, we made compute, a computer available to people and built in to teach them and so forth. And I mean, maybe I'm mistaken, but that seems to have never gotten any use.
No, nobody uses it. But while my daughter was home from college, I had her teach an iPhone help a class. And it was, it is much needed. It is much needed. So hopefully I will, I, I'm going to reach out to the high school and see if, you know, a senior needs hours or a junior wants to plan a project and be able to come and teach IT classes. Not IT as in like, this is the computer, but like, this is your iPhone. This is how it works. This is how you save pictures. This is how you print pictures. This is how, you know, like, you know, things like that.
Here's how you back up. I, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I really do. Cause I think there are people, I mean, even with the iPads, that, you know, people would use their iPads or their tablets or whatever. You know, that their child gave them for Christmas and they look at it and they say, okay, what can I do other than FaceTime? You know? I mean, I'm a kind of one of those, kind of in between, you know? And I think there are people that would take advantage of that. And I think there are high school kids that are interested, as my granddaughter says, in old people. And, you know, would be willing to either community service hours or, you know, a senior project thing would be, that would be a great senior project for someone.
I think the seniors were resistant to, to technology. I mean, the, the seniors that jumped on board. And, and didn't really see a need for it until COVID. And then it was like, oh my God, I, I like, I need interaction. I need to talk to my kids. I need, you know, and so you know, find themselves.
Now, you're, you're, the purchase of iPads and so forth, that's under the, the DP support? That's that extra $1,000 is in that? Is that in the programs portion of things?
That is support for the computer. So if, if I were to buy them, that would be like the insurance policies that I would have on them. That would be that kind of a thing.
So in other words.
That's what I would increase for.
They're in the, they're right. It's the $1,000 increase in the senior center DP support that you, that you're going to take this out of.
Yes, that's what I would take that out of.
Yeah, okay. Nice. And let's, you know, let's go with that.
I like it.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, I think, I think that's fine. I think, you know, of course, with those kinds of things, you just have to, you know, keep an eye on them and make sure people don't space out and take them home and, and things like that. You know, not that anybody's stealing things, but that is one of the problems where you start getting, sharing a lot of equipment. Sometimes things go missing and with no, with no bad intent. It just, the next day you need it and they can't find it.
Well, I think the, the goal in something like that would be someone to come in and take one of those classes or whatever.
Right.
And then be so interested in it that they get their kid to buy him an iPad.
Right.
They look what I could do, you know, that kind of thing. Cause even though we are old dogs, it is kind of nice to learn a new trick now and then, you know?
No, no, and it, listen, it's, 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 it's like the telephone was 70 years ago. I mean, there's
Yes, I know.
Oh, there's no debate about it.
Yep, yeah.
It's just a matter of, you know, we, we, we haven't done well with it despite our efforts in the past. And, you know, I think this is a great idea. But, you know, we just have to, if we're going to make the investment, you know, we have a hope, investment will bear some fruit.
Exactly.
And that just means that people will do it. I mean, you know, the, the thing is.
When you had that class with your daughter, I mean, how many people came and and used her?
Four. I, I kept it very small because I knew there was going to be a ton of questions.
Oh, of course.
Yep. So we filled it.
Yeah.
It was full.
And, and that's a great one to do, like as a, you know, I don't know if you charged for it. It's probably the kind of thing that we shouldn't charge for because it, you know, people don't know its value until they're already past the point of, you know, making, you know, they'll make the decision not to do it if it's going to cost them 10 bucks. But they, if they do it for free, they, after the fact, they'd say, oh, I would have paid 10 bucks for that, but, you know. Then you hope you got to get them in the, that the friends get them in the fundraising side.
Did you get good feedback from the four people that were there?
I did. Actually Renee has been calling my daughter. So, so, and that's a good thing, you know, that's a good.
Well, well, you know what I would also do is the four people that, that took it, have them talking up to other member, other people in the community.
Well, get some testimonials and put it in.
Exactly. That, that, you know, that could be very helpful.
And those four people might want to come back themselves.
Yeah.
Yeah. Advanced.
So let's move on to our programs. We're getting near, we're getting near the end, guys.
This is the big pill.
Yep, okay.
Let's touch base on the mileage. I, this has been a bone of contention with me for all the years I've been on the board. Are you planning on turning in your mileage, Jen?
No. I don't charge for milk or half and half. It's just, you know, it's like Monday morning, I'm out. I just go to Wayne's. I just get it. It's just that way.
You know, it's, it's just a cost of doing business and I hate to see it. Yeah, bypassed, but.
You know, I think, I, I do think that, you know, particularly, you know, a total of, of what amounts to about $4.10 a month towards gases is barely a gallon of gas.
It's ridiculous. I mean.
That's 20 miles. So maybe, may, you know, but, but if you're not, you know, we can't force you to take it. That's entirely up to you, but it's, it's there and it's probably too low a number.
Oh, do you think?
I mean, you know, I mean, if you're talking about the traveling from the senior center to the middle of town and back, I mean, you're talking four miles a day. At the end of the month, maybe you're talking, you know, 50 miles.
Okay, so do you think I should leave it? I'll, I'll use it.
You're not going to charge for it. We might as well leave it alone.
I just feel bad.
If you're going to charge for it, it should go up to like at least 10 bucks a month. I, you know, I don't know.
I was going to say at least $100 or something.
Yeah.
With the price of gas today. Probably could collect the 50 bucks in the time she's been there. Yeah. So it's your choice, Jen.
All right. I, I'll, I'll leave it there with, because I'm, I'm going to hammer them with budget stuff, so.
We're going to take your bills.
No matter what.
Let's, 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 let's talk about that a little bit. So at least we know we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Okay, so on the programs, we have a $10,000 commitment. Thank you again from the friends.
Yes.
For the coming year. To subsidize our programming. And now, as we know, traditionally, the town doesn't put a lot of our, a lot of money into our program.
Correct.
All right. So to assume, to all of a sudden assume that we're going to get them to put a lot of money into the programming, when we're raising other places, other monies that we need just to keep the place intact and open, that might be a hard pill for them to swallow.
It might.
Why not?
Sure.
But I think, you know, let's, let's discuss it. Okay, so, you know, again, this is per year. Obviously, we're talking about this year. So, so, or the year, we're talking about next year.
Next year.
Talking about beginning July 1st. Now, you want to have three outdoor events per year with entertainment.
Yep.
Limited to about 40 with a cost of approximately 1,200 per, per event. And anticipated total expenses of 3,600 leaves approximately $2,400 dollars that we would need to raise somewhere. And when you say with entertainment, what, what is that?
That's having somebody come in and sing and perform.
Okay.
Yeah.
Why are we charging $10?
To keep it at a minimal. We could charge 20.
I'm asking, I'm asking why we're
Because I, I think it's kind of fair. I, you know, I, I know not a lot of seniors have a, have a, a ton of money and I wouldn't want them not to come just because the ticket is 20 and not, and not 10.
Well, how much do we charge for soup? Five, right? And that's just soup. You come in, take your soup and leave. At this point. Other times it would be take your soup and have it in, in, in the building, but.
It's not just soup. It's like, it's your soup, it's bread, it's your dessert. You know, it's, it's a meal for five bucks.
Yeah, right. It's a great deal and people really love it. You know, my, my question is, I mean, we can circle back to it. My question is, if we're, if we're going to do three events, right, and we're going to, we're going to raise 1,200 bucks, you know, is the town going to be willing to be on the hook for 2,400? And I see this as being just the first thing we're talking about. So, so, you know, we've, we've worked very hard to try to avoid things like, let's have memberships and all the other stuff that people have recommended to us. So some of it has to be self-paid.
Okay.
You know, a great deal is a great deal. I'm not saying this one, let's just keep talking.
I mean, we could charge 15. I, that's not, you know, that's not a killer.
Well, what, what do you see happening at these events, Jen? I mean, does it include food, entertainment?
Yeah, it's going to include food and the entertainment.
And it's, it's catered. This isn't volunteer, right?
Correct, correct. I, I don't, with COVID and everything, I, I, we're not going to go with any kind of a volunteer.
Are you going to have tents or not? I think you need to raise it to 20 myself. I think. Now, are you planning, is the friends going to pay for some of this?
Yes.
Well, we don't, we, you know, we're getting 10,000 from the friends. Let's say the friends pay for this. That means you only have $7,600 left of the friends money.
Okay.
And, and we have a number of things that we're still going to have to, you know, figure out. I think, I think Jen, the gap at the end of the day is about $7,000, right?
Yes.
So that, so, so Sharon, that's, that's after the friends money has been used. That's after whatever fees we've charged is used. We still owe $7,000, 7,500 or something like that on these, on these programs.
Yeah, I'm thinking of next year with a 2,300.
Pardon?
I'm thinking of next year also, 2023.
Yeah.
Well, you know, the friends, the friends does the best they can.
Yep.
With, you know, with the commitment to the town. You know, their, their fundraiser, our fundraising, you know, has been impacted somewhat, obviously with COVID and whatever. So I, you know, I don't foresee next year's commitment from the friends being double, you know, being $20,000. I don't think that's going to happen. We look like they do the 10.
I think the highest we've ever had since I've been around is about 12, maybe.
Right, it's about 12. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You know, maybe we could go up to like 12 next year, but it's not going to be, you know, a, you know, double the amount. So, you know, I would, you know, I would consider that 10,000 as what you're going to, you know, what friends are able to do. And if they can do a couple thousand dollars more, we, you know, we definitely will. Do you think they'll be able to do the 10,000 again? This year? Yeah, we've, we've committed to 10,000. Yeah. No, I mean, I'm going to be able to raise another 10,000 this year. Yes. For next year. I hope so, yes. That, that's our goal is to do another 10,000 for next year.
And, and frankly, you know, from what, you know, the only way you could really, you know, kind of kind of make a guess, right, is that we sent out 1,200, we have 1,200 people on a mailing list for our newsletter. I don't know how many people you solicit out of that 1,200. But that's a limited universe. Because you, you get, I would bet, do you get more than 300 donations a year?
I think they've gotten, I, I don't know the number of donations, but I know that we were kind of surprised that we actually did better this year in the annual appeal than we did last year.
Lots of places have found that with COVID.
Yep. Yep. I mean, it's, you know, it wasn't double or anything, but it was probably $1,000 more or $1,200 more than we got last year in the annual appeal. So that has gone up. You know, we did well on the point set of sale. That made about 11 or 1,200 dollars profit, which is great. So, you know, I mean, we're doing okay with the friends. But I don't foresee it going beyond 12,000.
Yeah, yeah, you've got, you've got a limited universe. And unless, unless we started doing things differently and we're much more aggressive in, you know, because you're asking for philanthropy, right?
Yes.
I would be surprised if you're, if one in four people that use the senior center make philanthropy. You know, give.
Yep. You know, and we haven't been able to do the, the holiday festival or whatever, you know, because of COVID. So honestly, we were, the last time we met, we were kind of happy with where we were considering the constraints that we've had over the last couple of years. So, you know, that 10,000, I would probably predict that it's going to stay pretty much at that.
Yeah.
You know, maybe go up a little bit, but.
Unless we start doing things differently or something, you know, or somebody just decides they love the place so much and just, you know, leaving a lot of money or who knows.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. So, you know, the refreshment piece, that's just sort of general stuff that you need daily to open up to be able to offer people things five days a week.
Yeah.
That's fine. An additional 17, you just mean 1,700. You, you say additional. That, that, is, is that meaning additional because it has to do with the outdoor catered events? Or does that mean additional? Because that's just what we need to do, all the events we do.
Yes, all the events that we do.
I don't know what a creator space is.
So that, that is, the creator space is the So that that is the creator space is the is the back room that I want to turn into a a creator space and for that. Um I will probably uh eventually rip out that carpet, put in a new floor. Uh get a glow forge, maybe a three D printer and.
I don't know what a glow forge is.
Yeah, what do we?
I don't know what creator spaces. I don't know what a glow forge is. Sharon's laughing at me, but you don't know either.
Oh, I already asked her about that early.
Did you? Oh, I'm sorry.
I said, what's the glow forge?
Oh, my God, I'm sorry.
No. So.
What 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 is what is creator space?
A creator space is like a a a place where people with similar interests um come in to get together to work on projects and share knowledge and collaborate on ideas. Like um whether it is has to do with painting or sculpting or or building or woodworking, uh things like that. Um it is. It is a. It is a way for people just to come together and and create.
Yeah, like minded people, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm all over that. I like it.
Yep.
Me me like jewelry making or?
Absolutely, absolutely. And glow forge is just a medium in order to do that. Um so a a glow forge is um a laser etcher and cutter and you can put you can etch. A happy birthday on a on a, you know, on a piece of wood, or you can put it on a on a uh a crepe. I mean, you can you can actually stick food in this thing and and print on it. It's it's. Yeah, it's it's really, it's designed for a a creator. You can you can use wood to cut out pieces of wood and make sculpture. You can make lamps. You can make bowls, you can make pencil holders. Um it's just, it's just a medium in which you create.
Okay, well, thank you.
And you know.
Idea.
And and it's connected to uh you know, like a computer, a laptop, an iPad, and you can go in and you can either use pre pre made designs or you can design your own. And it teaches you to use technology as well as, you know, while you're creating.
Well, well, no, wait, you say it teaches you.
Well, yeah.
You mean it gives you the ability to do it and somebody else has to teach you?
It's user.
Yes.
Yes.
You can you can either use um uh designs that are already created by somebody else. Or you can use the computer program and you can design your own. So it's it's the ability to use technology in a in a in a very forward and positive way. Um it's it's, I think it's revolutionary, but that's just me.
Well, it seems to me it could be used for if there is a holiday festival again, it could be used to create things to sell.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
It could be it could be a crafter's uh dream.
Yep, let's do it.
Okay.
All right, it it is. We're gonna have to figure out how to how to pay for it.
Yes, we are.
Um because the creator space.
Dollars.
Is two thousand dollars. A glow forge with air filter is forty is five thousand dollars.
Yep.
Wow.
So we're at seven thousand.
Mm hmm.
For the investment.
Mm hmm.
Not including whatever costs we have associated with, you know, removing stuff and reconfiguring the room. Right?
Um, actually, because because I would get the built in or the um. Extra air purifier that that connects to the machine itself, we wouldn't have to vent it out any windows. It would be kind of self contained.
No, I'm I'm talking about don't you need workspace like table side tables?
Yeah.
Someplace to work on.
Yep.
And chairs to sit on and, you know.
We have that in there. We have we have stuff in there now that um that can be used for. Creation and you know, paint can get spilled on it, glue can get spilled on it, and I wouldn't be upset about that.
Okay.
Um. We will take in an approximate approximately nine hundred and sixty five dollars.
Mm hmm.
On um a seven thousand dollar investment.
Mm hmm, or more. It depends. It depends on how it's used and and how we can get it off the ground. Um you can teach classes and we can charge people, you know, they buy their own materials. Um and we can uh, you know.
If you're teaching classes, it's probably tougher people to bring their own material, right? I mean, they won't know what material they should use.
Yep.
So maybe.
Own, if they start to use it on their own, they can start to, they can come in, set up a time to come in and use it and.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, I I think I think we have to try to work out some way to get. To generate more revenue out of this thing. You know, whether it's a thousand dollars so that we bring this this cost down to five grand. Uh for out of pocket expense. Um because I just think. That 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 a a six a six grand expense, we're, you know, it has to come from someplace, right? So so it should be a combination of we're gonna ask the town for money, but we're also gonna ask the users for money.
Mm hmm. No, I I mean, there's not going to be a startup cost for for any, especially when you're.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. All I'm saying is we've got to be committed to getting more than nine hundred and sixty five dollars for it this year and every other year.
Okay.
That Jen, I, you know, again, excuse my ignorance here, but it's two thousand dollars for the creation of a creator space. And then almost five for this glow forge with the air filter. What is that two thousand dollars for the creator space? I don't know what that means.
That means um pulling out the carpet, putting in a floor, putting in a different floor.
Okay.
Uh. Building uh or having cabinets and shelving put in so that people can.
So that that's structural, that's.
That's true. And and it may and it may not even be that much. It may not be that much.
Right, she's just, you know, for space, which I think is really important. There's no place in Roxbury for people to do that.
Right.
So.
Well, it's. And it it is the kind of thing that, you know, there's two ways of looking at doing programming, right? One is. When there's the demand there, like people are asking for it. I would suspect people are not asking for this. But I would suspect this is the other thing, which is something aspirational that's going to introduce people to something that they do, which is a little more chancy. Because you could in two years have a same kind of investment that we had in our computer, which didn't do much.
Mm hmm.
You know, and the and you know, the cost we spent in fixing that room up and and everything else. You've got to take some chances. Uh I'm I'm not against doing this at all. I think it's a great idea. I'm just against the idea of not. Of not asking for the cost to be shared by the users.
Okay.
Yep.
Because I, as I said, I don't, what I don't want to do is wind up having to have another conversation about charging memberships.
Mm hmm.
And the way around memberships is to be solvent and not just expect the town to pick up every thousand dollars we come up with for an idea.
Okay.
Yep. I think that's something, I think that's something that will take off. I think it's something that people don't know. Or don't realize that they would might use, but that once it's there. And it's it's up and going, that it's something that people would use, a lot more people would use it.
But the tricky part is getting people to come in to use it.
Mm hmm.
In the first place.
Right.
Well, I think it's important that um the center gets beyond just exercise programs. And bus.
Mm hmm.
Yes, yes. But but comparatively, the exercise programs, you know. Pay for. You know, a lot of their stuff, pay for half of their stuff, you know, or pay for an amount of their.
Right. But let's let's grow more than.
Yeah, yeah, but but we should grow, we should grow with the idea that we're gonna. We're gonna grow in a way that that. We're just not gonna continually ask for more money to grow.
Right, well, break the budget.
Well, no, just if we're if we're gonna do it, it it, somebody else has to pay for it. You know, it's gotta be a combination, right? It's it's like the public interest, you know, the town, the taxpayers in town. Have to be willing to throw a certain amount of money into the senior center like they throw into a couple of other things, recreation department and so forth. They cover short the shortfalls at those places and invariably have. Because there is no social life in the town of Roxbury. We can talk all about economic development. We can talk about all we want about getting people to come to our schools. We could talk all we want about all those other things. Finding volunteers. If there's not a thing for anybody to do.
Mm hmm.
Nobody wants to live in a town. There's nothing to do. So I I get it. At the same time, you know, there's a a a, you know, an aversion uh to spending public money. Here, um which I get it, it's fine. You know, they call it responsibility. Okay, fine. Um um so I mean, we just can't ignore that. That's all. Um so I think anything we do, we have to try to recoup some of some of the money, because at the end of the day, we only have ten thousand dollars. That we're using that we don't have to go to the town for.
Correct.
Right? But we've got two other places to do to to ask for that money. The people that are using it.
Mm hmm.
And benefiting from it. And the town. So both groups, I hope, would be willing to invest in these things.
And I I always think that. You know, it it's not that, you know, senior citizens are wealthy here or whatever. But I think the days of any of us thinking that ten dollars covers something, you know, are long gone.
Oh, I agree.
And I think seniors, you know, ap- appreciate that. Not that they want to go from spending ten dollars or something to fifty. But I don't think there's anything wrong in asking twenty dollars for. The catering or whatever. I know I I honestly, in the in this day and age, I don't think that's a lot to ask.
Well, you can't. Less than twenty dollars for sure.
Well, particularly if you're gonna throw in a meal and entertainment and three hours together, you know, ten dollars is ridiculous.
Yeah, yes, of course.
You know, so we have to be a little bit more cognizant of, well, and there's another thing I have to tell you. And I learned this, uh I years ago, I started a basketball program here. And in the very beginning, it was free. We got the we got the basketball court from the town, you know, from the school. I got a couple of parents to help me. It was free. We didn't have uniforms, we didn't have anything. We just let the kids come and give them some training in basketball, just some real fundamental stuff. And some days there would be twelve kids and some days there would be three kids and some days there would be seventeen kids. And it was free. So we decided we were going to start charging and we started charging enough to give the kid a T shirt. And, you know, to be able to provide a little bit more. Um uh material. And once people started paying for it, everybody was there all the time.
Yep.
If you don't charge people something, you are you are not giving it any value.
That's right. It's gotta, you've gotta attach a value to it to make it.
In the game.
To make it enticing almost, you know?
Well, if if you don't put a value on it, or if you put a small value on it, you make it worthless.
That's right.
So I think we have to be a little bit, um, I'm not saying aggressive. But as I said, ten dollars, I think it the the age of the ten dollar, the age of the ten dollar lunch with entertainment intense is gone.
Absolutely.
So I it's either we scaled it down, or if you want it as much as you want, then you've gotta, we've gotta ra- you've gotta raise more money out of it.
Mm hmm, yeah.
I think the same thing goes for the creator space.
Yep.
You know, it's, yes, it's a great idea. We have to, you have to get people to use it and you have to get people to support it. And since, you know, some extent, not a, you know, people aren't opening their pocketbooks to 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 um. Give us programming money, then they have to pay for their own programming or part of their own programming.
Right.
Yeah, I don't I don't think there's anything wrong with that at all.
Okay.
Um so so again, I think you'd need to adjust those numbers to reflect um a larger uh amount of um. Covers or. Or, you know, ad- admissions or whatever, however we call it. Um to to, you know, diminish some of those, some of that number.
Okay.
Um. You know, I mean, it seems like our our um. You know, all of the things that we're doing are in in terms of this next group funds to cover Tai Chi aerobics, aerobics tube, you know, and so forth. Um they seem pretty well, you know, involved is, I mean, what 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 are we charging? Um it's thirty, it's thirty thousand dollars. We are raising about fifteen. Yeah, so so you know, we're we're getting our expenses in at fifteen.
Mm hmm.
Again, what what are we charging for for those events? And are we charging a realistic amount of money?
Um, it's four dollars a class, which is dirt cheap. I mean, it's dirt cheap. I didn't, that's what Linda was charging. I didn't raise it. Um, that's what it worked out to be.
So five dollars a class, let's just roughly say, ra- raise each class by a dollar. Right? That would be a, that would be a twenty five percent increase in in revenue.
Yeah.
And a twenty five percent increase in revenue would be about a three thousand. So in other words, we would go from asking fifteen to asking for about eleven.
Okay.
And one dollar and one dollar is not a lot. I mean, but.
When I I did the night program, I charged more for the night program because that was a new program. Um I didn't, I didn't want to come in and start, you know. Shaking them down.
You didn't want, you didn't want to go in with the retail price of those classes. I mean, if you took those classes anywhere else, they'd be a lot more than four or five dollars a class.
They would, they would. They would.
At the same time, you know, like you said, you know, these are seniors. They, you know, they love the exercise classes. Um and I don't think it should go to double. But you know, adding a dollar a class, Cher, you do a lot of those. I don't think anybody would.
Oh, no.
Yell about paying a dollar more a class.
No, a dollar wouldn't make any difference to us.
First, so I I I think I think, you know, even though it's a, it adds up. It adds up. It's an incremental adjustment, but it's also being a little bit more fair and and frankly. I personally believe that if there's something that we want to be subsidized by taxpayer, by the taxpayer for. Um it's this suite of, it's this suite of services because. This is, you know, this has to deal with uh balance and physical strength and other things. That uh truly extend people's health and lives.
Hmm.
Falling is the most dangerous thing to the over seventy population, not cancer, not, you know, any number of horrible other things. Maybe maybe COVID has knocked it up, but falling is. Is a dangerous thing for older people. Um I think it's really important that we make this, we keep this accessible, but I I do think. That we can't. You know, we can't just continue to to make everything a a a such a deal.
Okay.
And even like um. Sandra Cuentro's um watercolor and acrylic classes. They're forty, they're forty dollars and that covers all of the materials and everything, right, Jen?
Yes, it does. And I actually did raise that. It was thirty. So I raised it by ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I think that maybe could even go up to fifty and if people would, you know, if you're interested. I think people would, you know, they love Sandra and she does a great job, I understand, in the class. Um, that, you know, and it doesn't have to be done now, but I'm just saying, I would think even another ten dollars, people would, you know, appreciate that. Because it's, you know, four weeks.
Yep.
Of of instruction.
I would like to hear her change the way she she bills for it too. I mean, she uh. She bills per student. I would rather pay her a flat fee.
Mm hmm.
And um. And charge uh people accordingly.
Well, I think, you know, the key to that too is to let people know that there an increase is coming while they're enjoying the class and they don't want to give it up. So you can say, no, really, I mean. While people are loving being there and there, it's a social interaction and they're having a good time and. Yada, yada, yada. But that's when you say, I just want to, you know, inform you that in the next six months, the price of this class is going to increase.
Yep.
Or or just basically say some of our costs are going to increase because.
Right, right.
You can't lose money on this.
Yeah, people understand that the cost of materials goes up. And uh speaking. Personally, the cost of art supplies is skyrocketing, so.
And and our our next uh piece of business on the um. Speakers instructor, I mean. Don't a lot of speakers that are, you know, they come to us. Speak for free or do we always pay for for instructor, for people to speak?
Uh we can, if we want to pay, you know.
Oh, plug it in. If you take the photo off, it might last longer, if you take the, uh you just leave the voice on, you might last longer.
And could you plug it in, mine's plugged in.
I know, I was actually trying to record this so I could take notes later and my phone actually ran out of memory.
Doesn't doesn't Zoom record it automatically, you can just go back to Zoom?
Yeah, I will go back to Zoom, this was just gonna be easier for me. I, you know, I could totally raise fees um. And charge and charge for some of these things.
Or 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 maybe we don't need fourteen. You know, I I don't know what you have in mind, you know, like, like, i- is that number fourteen because you have some specific. Things that you want to cover, or is it because you're thinking I'd like to cover one and a half per month or?
I would like to to cu- uh draw in. Um different kinds of speakers, not just the usual falls prevention, um nutrition. You know, whatever, um I, next month I'm bringing in a gentleman who is going to teach laugh therapy. So you're going to learn uh about. Different breathing exercises and ways of laughing that actually create. Um, you know, a a healthy, positive, uh science-driven change in your body. And so, you know. That's something, that's something that that costs money, it's because it's something different, um however. Um with that, I would probably have like the Lutheran home or. One of our local businesses come in and cater the lunch for free. So, you know, maybe I, you know, maybe I charge, you know, ten dollars for the speaker and with that they get a speaker and lunch. And and that's how we do it, um definitely money can be raised there. More than, you know, probably the thousand dollars that's there, I could probably pay for half of it.
I mean, I mean, I I think perhaps you should. Say you'll raise fifteen hundred bucks. And do twelve of them and that's gonna cut a substantial amount of money off of this and you can see how it works. You know, I mean, that's that should make a twelve hundred dollar difference. Which is not insignificant. And we'll see, and you'll see how it works, and if it goes great guns and everybody's crazy about it. The next year we won't, you know, we'll we'll have this discussion and it'll probably be a little different. I'm just, I'm just a little worried, as I said before, hitting the town with too much. Additional muddies. Um will will, you know, with investments that we've already made. In in the operations of the place, you know, I mean, you know, we're we're we're. We're paying you a a larger, you know, a big increase that that the town decided to go for, which is wonderful. But to also throw another seven or eight or nine thousand dollars on top of that means all of a sudden we've added twenty-five percent to the. Uh overall budget year over year. You know, or or ten percent to the last full year we had, which we wouldn't have ever been able to. Which would would not have flown if we had had a normal period. So I just think tweaking some of these numbers and getting more into a head of. You know, we should be charging fair. Prices both to our users and to ourselves. For these, for the things that we're doing.
Yeah, you know, Jen, if you're gonna have a speaker come in and whatever, and you're gonna have ten of them or whatever. That's going to be, I don't think there's any problem with you starting and saying it's gonna be fifteen dollars. You know, that ten dollars is in our head, you know, that's, those, here she is, hi. You know, I don't think asking someone to pay fifteen dollars to get a lunch and a speaker is a lot. You know, and I'm not in the, you know, the two percent people. Um I really don't think it's too much to ask. Fifteen dollars to do that. What do you guys think, am I, am I off on that?
You're absolutely right, Virginia, I mean. Sometimes you can be too low.
Yeah, get out of this ten dollar mindset, yeah.
I missed that, fifteen dollars for what?
Um like if there was a speaker coming in talking about. Veneology or something and you get lunch.
And you got lunch?
For fifteen dollars, I mean. Yeah, you know, and you know, we're not in the, we're not trust fund babies here, but. You know, I really think we have to get out of that ten dollar. That mindset from ten dollars for ten dollars.
Remember, I do think, I do think there will be an inevitable conversation. About membership. If we don't. Address, address this. And uh my personal feeling is, I don't, you know, all the things that go along with membership, organizing it and so forth, it's a big headache. And what will really happen is a number of people will just stop coming. You know, because because you want membership, you get an exclusive. Deal, but you only get two thirds of the people. And and that's not. We, we, I think we all, we perceive what we're doing as being partly at least a public service.
Absolutely, and I don't think, I don't think fifteen dollars is too much to ask pretty much across the board, Jen. For any of these cla- you know, these lectures or lunches or whatever. I think whatever you were charging ten for, me personally, I think you can charge fifteen for. Without affecting the people who come and. You know, numbers and whatever.
What do you think, now this is just a side, but what do you think about um charging uh like a fitness fee? And um you can either pay it all at once or break it up, but that enables you to take whatever class. You wanted. Instead of paying for each individual class, what do you think about something like that?
Pay pay a flat fee and you can take any class you want?
Take any class you want.
Yeah, I guess that would make sense if you think it's viable.
I I don't know, I I I would. Fall on your expertise because you take a lot of the classes and you know more than I do at this point about about that. What do you think about in the future, something like that?
Them at the classes, it would be like one class to four classes or what?
Yeah, because some people, I'm like. Me and and a couple others come pretty faithfully every class, week after week, but then there's other people that'll come. Once or twice and then not come again and then maybe come one more time, so. I don't know how that would work for with a flash fee.
I think it starts to feel like it's a health club. And and I don't, that's not what we are, you know?
I think somebody may want to take a yoga class, but not a Zumba class.
I think it's much better. I'll come the day you want it.
So I just had an idea, what about um? And I'm just thinking out loud here, so uh what if there was a a gift card type thing that was available so that. Children of people here could buy. A hundred dollar gift card for them to use to put classes and whatever.
I think that's brilliant and we have that in Woodbury and I love it and they do do that. Especially like with uh massage, the massage therapist that comes in Andrea, people buy, you know, gift cards for her all the time.
Yeah, I just think, you know, I mean, people could even, you know. Give them anonymously to people that live at Bernhardt Meadows or whatever, you know?
Yeah, on the giving tree, you know, instead of buying them a pair of s- uh another pair of socks they don't need or a sweater. Card to the senior center.
Yeah, then they could use it for whatever they want, they could use it for a luncheon or. A catered event or a program or an exercise or whatever.
And we can build that into the My Senior Center app so it can keep track of it.
I mean, that that would be the only issue, uh Jen, for you would be. You know, keeping aligned, how much the. You know, because I'm assuming we're not gonna get things with strips on them and so forth. What the. What the value, uh you know, how much of the value is getting eaten up each time and how, you know, when it expires?
Fire, I would just.
I don't mean expires, I just mean, you got a hundred dollar gift card, when's the hundred dollars all used? How do you keep that? In, how do you, how do you?
In the My Senior Center app, you can go into an individual's account and you can actually put a credit on their account. And every time you charge something, it just automatically divots out.
There would be some bookkeeping that would need to be done, that's all I'm saying.
Well, but I think Jen's willing to do that to.
It's fine. You know, that's just a detail, you know?
Or maybe you could get a volunteer to help you with that or whatever.
And that's a great idea because, you know, as we get older, our children have probably bought us everything. And they say, oh my God, what am I gonna get mom for a birthday this year, you know, if they put a hundred dollars on the senior center. You know, you could go and do whatever you wanted with that, use it for a trip or whatever.
But but we should let people know that it's avail- you know what I mean, like in the signup. Area and so forth, we should let people know that this is. Going going to be available. As part of the conversation about costs.
Yep, and maybe, maybe Patrick could do it on one of his email blasts. You know, as of a certain day. Senior Center gift cards are available.
Town hall or. I think we need to think more out of the box.
We should also start taking credit card payments, but that's a different conversation for a different day.
Yeah, I think I think that the the main thing is, it it's. We're not do- we're not doing anything that hasn't been done before, you know, we're really not thinking that far out of the box, we're thinking out of the box for the way we've normally run this.
Well, think out of our box.
But but, you know, what what we're talking about are things that are commonly, are almost expected. In 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 some places and and we do some of it already, we're just talking about making it a more realistic. Model. To avoid having other problems later, I mean, that's really what 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 we're doing.
When you're you're talking about on the next page, I'm looking at funds to cover five out of state trips. With twenty-four passengers on a Dacco bus.
Yes, no, this. All right, so this was my, this is my plan. Lauren and I discussed this. At length and. They would be, Woodbury would be willing, because their bus doesn't go out of state either. Um to go Habsys on a Dacco bus. That means instead of us paying uh twelve, twelve hundred dollars, right? For the rental of the bus, we'd be paying half, so we'd be paying six. Right? We'd get twelve seats, they get twelve seats to fill however however they'd like. Now, if we end up going to someplace like um the Van Gogh Museum and and Boston. Okay, so they're gonna have an entrance fee of like forty dollars and we charge twenty-five dollars for that bus ride. So that's a total sixty-five dollars. You know, you know, times twelve. Boom, we. We're good, we're golden. If if for some reason our the trip ends up being really popular and we have a, you know, whatever, and we want to do it ourselves. Then then I'll do the same thing, um I just, I was. Not sure as to how much we would charge, but uh based on our conversation today, I probably would charge twenty-five dollars. Or twenty dollars to ride that bus, just for the bus itself and the trip.
Twenty-five dollars is nothing to go to Boston.
No, it isn't, no, it isn't, or to New York City, you know, uh to go see a show or to go to the museums.
Twelve seats on a bus. It costs twelve hundred dollars.
No, we would have, if we took the entire bus, it would, the cost would be twelve, twelve fifty, I believe Kim said it was to rent that bus.
And sold twenty seats. Twenty-five bucks. Only five hundred dollars, we're still way short on the.
Yeah, I mean, we would be. It would, we would be way under the approximated expense, so I mean. It, we, instead of it being thirty-two, it would be, you know, down to nothing, so practically, so I think. You know, I could tweak the numbers on that and make it more uh appealing, certainly.
We've been saying that, what you're suggesting for a few years now. Why can't we share with another town?
Exactly, and and really, that's kind of the way, that's the way of the future. Um a lot of places are starting to regionalize. Um I I don't think that we are. The powers that be are ready to accept things like that yet or or figure out how all that's going to work. Um in terms of money and funding and all of that, but that's really kind of. How it's how it's working, I mean, I know plenty of seniors that center hop before covid. You know, they they're from, let's say, uh Roxbury, but they they look at all the programs available, they go to Woodbury. They go to Woodbridge, they go to this senior center, they go to that, because they. Or different, oh, yeah. Had um two women that came from New York uh just over the border to come to my art class. Because because it was different and it was being offered.
Yeah, and we always couldn't, couldn't understand why we didn't uh do things with Bridgewater. You know, Bridgewater and Roxbury splitting the bus.
And Washington, I mean, come on, you know?
So that, I don't think that would be a problem at all, getting people to go in. On the bigger bus.
No, I don't either, I don't either. Um and and I know that it's, it was, it's huge in in Woodbury and I know it's huge for us, I'm sure it's huge for. For Hilltop as well, you know, so maybe we do one trip and we we. And go in with Woodbury and then the time we go with Bridgewater, but certainly. Combining trips like that is beneficial to seniors and it's beneficial to our pocketbook, so. Really what we should do.
I think the idea, you know, of trying to do some stuff, it basically, in part because of your history with the place. And its proximity to us and similar, and a lot of similarities in the towns, I mean, what what Woodbury certainly a bigger town than Roxbury, but. You know, there's, there's, there's some natural stuff there, I think, that it makes it better than a Southbury or New Milford or even a Washington. To start it with, so so I I think it's a great idea. Um and and again, I think if we can, if you can jiggle these numbers a little bit by increasing some of the fees. You know, diminishing a couple of things so that the number comes down a little bit more, you know, right now that we're we're, you know, I think our previous programming number was. You know, not even thirty thousand dollars uh that we had asked for with a ten thousand dollar. Contribution from uh the the um friends. You know, if if we just looked at the way this is on paper now, you know, there would be a. Between, you know, a a a new director, ten thousand additional dollars in in programming. And, you know, a fairly substantial jump in some of this, the day to day, day in and day out costs. You know, would would have been, would have been a twenty-five to thirty percent increase in our overall budget. And that would have, I that would, I think, get some negative attention from the Board of Finance. So so, you know, again, I think, I guess we have to vote on this. But I don't think we're ready to really vote on it because you have some numbers that you need to work out still, right?
Right, I do have to get this to Kim though, um. And and relatively short order.
Yeah, well, I don't want to have another meeting about this. I don't think you guys do. So, so, you know, I guess what? Why don't we do this? Why don't you work out your number? Send it. To all of us in a single email. And we'll vote. Via email.
Okay.
Is that okay with you guys? I I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure if that's. If that's what we should or shouldn't be doing, but I think we're not. You know, we're not ready to 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 say what the numbers are. Um, because I think I think Jen needs the opportunity to. Work on some of the things we asked her to work on and to try to knock some of the some of these monies down. Uh, or or bring some of the, you know, bring some of the revenues up and and knock and knock. You know, in 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 work out what what it does to the final number.
Yep. I wouldn't be afraid, I wouldn't be afraid, Jen, to like especially these out of state trips. You know, you wanna go to the Metropolitan Museum in New York or whatever. We're not gonna drive, I'm not driving to New York.
I mean, I'm surprised that that's an under a hundred dollar trip anywhere.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Right, I mean, I I'm not gonna drive into the city.
Right.
To to go to anything right now. I mean, I'm just not. Um, you know, at our age, so I I wouldn't be afraid of. Putting in a a price for those that you think right at this moment might be a little too much. You know, I'm not saying charges two hundred dollars. But at the same time, forget the ten dollar and twenty dollar things. You can't charge us twenty dollars to go to New York. I mean, that's ridiculous. That's ridiculous.
You're, yeah. You're absolutely right, Virginia.
Do you think I'm right, Cher? I mean, you know.
Yes, yes, yes.
Can't even buy gas to go to New York for that.
So, I mean, and and you could make it, you could make it. Again, you know, I think we're gonna have to learn a little bit of about how it works, but you could even do it, hey. Seventy five bucks for the first person, bring a friend and we'll charge sixty bucks. For that friend. So in other words, you're knocking ten percent off the cost. But you still two seats.
Well, Sharon and I have talked to people that live at Bernhardt Meadow that say, well, I would pay more to go to, you know, Cher. I would pay more to go to here or there or whatever, you know?
Right, right. People are willing to pay more to get a good trip and make it, you know, something that everybody's gonna enjoy. So if you have to pay fifty dollars or whatever.
Yeah.
They're willing to do it, really.
They're 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 willing to pay for the experience and that's what you're saying.
And not have to drive.
Yes.
So so I mean, I think the big things are. You know, eh eh add charges for the. For the outdoor events to to, you know, basically cover those expenses more by the users.
Yep.
Um, add some monies in, now, you know, the creator space is obviously, I think, something that's a capital improvement in the building or a change in the building. But I think you've gotta charge more for the um. Uh, uh, actual usage or the training or the whatever needs to be done. So that your revenues are, you know, raised by, you know, a good thousand dollars, you know, you're getting two thousand in revenue, nine ninety five, something like that, or even twenty five hundred. Um, increase for the Tai Chi and aerobics, you know, hopefully that'll bring things up. You know, so you're knocking twenty five hundred dollars off of there. Uh, your speakers maybe do, just plan on two less and charge a little bit. For those since you're gonna be giving, you know, you're you're planning on doing some food with those or some other beverage or something with them. And then charge more on those special trips. Um, uh, because. They're valuable and. You know, everything, anytime you get in the car right now, it's fifty percent more expensive than it was a year ago.
Absolutely. Now, I I have a question. I can eliminate the funds to cover their tripleated expenses like docent fees, entrance fees. I can just have people pay that themselves, so we can eliminate that twenty nine hundred. Right from this budget. Um, I do have a question now. When I worked in Woodbury, um, our bus driver, we would include him in on. Um, like if we did uh trips to the museum or uh uh. When he drove to, uh, like we're going to an American in Paris, right? And but. But so we would pay for his ticket because essentially. He or she would be the one that would be in charge of the event. Like they would be the one that was there, making sure everybody, you know, did what they were supposed to do. He would be in there with them, so we paid for. Uh, those kind of fees now, um, I don't think, and I I. I know that we don't pay for Bob's. But there are some things that he goes to that I really would like him to be the lead on in terms of. Being the one who's a representative of the center who uh goes in and makes sure everything go runs smoothly. So, and in terms of being able to pay for his.
Yes. Absolutely, yes.
I mean, as long as he's willing to accept the liabilities related to that.
Yes, and he does, he does.
Yeah.
He does. I think I think it's ridiculous that we don't pay him.
I do too.
Or pay for his ticket to go in there. He gets the seat, he sits with them and make sure that everybody's in their seats. He makes sure everybody's, you know, whoever's gone to the bathroom has come out. He wrangles, he does everything that, you know, that a person.
Yeah, on site, an onsite manager, yeah.
Yeah, so I would, I would like to include just. Some money in our budget. Or or like a group leader or something.
Yes.
So maybe like, you know, five hundred dollars.
Yeah, why don't why don't you call it a trip coordinator and? You know, put a hundred dollars a trip on it. And and again, you know, but that that goes back into, all right, but. You know, that means maybe not twenty, maybe it's twenty five, you know, I mean, you you know, again, you have to. You have to balance that.
Right.
But it's it's necessary, it's, you know. Somebody's responsible. I don't know, you know, I don't know how typically you would do it. I, you know, it sounds like a lot of times you, somebody would. Would have to be the group leader because you're still gonna be in Roxbury running the rest of the show. That'd be happening day in and day out. You know, you can't close the place down because twelve people are going to Hartford for. For a theater show, a theater matinee.
Right. Or, you know, in New York, somebody's gonna have to take lead on that. Somebody's gonna have to make sure if we go to New York that everybody, everybody has their ticket. But he has her money, everybody's coordinated, everybody gets on the bus, gets off the bus. That's not the bus driver.
No, no, it's gonna cost, well, all you have to do is have one person get left behind. And you're gonna find out pretty fast how much. How valuable that hundred bucks.
Yeah. And it is.
I think I think, you know, if there's, uh, you know, a position, not a position, but something certainly that we could do for a trip coordinator and we pay for their ticket. Um. Yeah, I'm I'm all for that.
I think we all are too.
Good at that.
Yeah.
He's always make sure everybody gets on and that everybody's there and.
The time, he's he's really, you know, he's the mother hen on the trips, you know, he's.
Whether he wants to be or not.
Definitely, he definitely is. I I don't think anybody has any issue with that, Jen.
Or if he paid for his ticket and his lunch.
Yeah.
That that's actually, they do pay for the lunch for the bus driver, um. The town does that.
Well, they do.
And Woodbury, yeah, they do. Yeah, they do.
Yeah, but not but not here, Bob pays for his own lunch. Yeah, not Roxbury, Bob pays for his own lunch.
For his own tickets.
Yep, yep. I I think that's great. I think he would really appreciate that.
I do too.
Well, I.
Actually, now that we're going to the, you know, to the uh an American in Paris, you know, he's gonna be sitting out there on a Saturday.
In Waterbury. Yeah, no, no, get him a ticket.
Yeah.
Get him a ticket, Jen.
All right, so so Jen, you'll go back to the drawing board. You'll try to cut, you know, a couple thousand dollars out of this. You know, basically, basically out of the seven thousand dollars that we'd be asking for the town, cut that. By twenty five hundred or three thousand or whatever between. A few diminished things, a few increases in in planned revenues, and so you don't have to get, you don't have to get um. Granular about it, but you know, you could say revenues of two thousand rather than nine ninety five revenues, you know, whatever. Add your, add your, add add the what you need for those five trips, certainly for a mother hen or whatever we wanna call it. If you've got some other trips that you need to throw a few more hundred in, just put them in there. You know, I don't think you need to delineate it. But I think at the end, to to drop a few grand off of this. Given the other expenses that we're gonna, we have no choice in in changing. Um, and trying to do some of the improvements you're talking about, I I think we'd we'd all be, we, you know, we'd all be okay with with what. What will come out of it, um, but since we technically have to. Have to approve it, it would probably be best that we just do it online and everybody responds together so that I can see it. And then we can put it in the um uh minutes as being approved by whatever the vote is. Um, and then um you will just have to hold on to the. You know. Jen, you will have to wait on the minutes. Submitting them or anything like that until we have voted.
Yeah.
So that you can put what the tally was.
Right, so I will, I will work on this tomorrow, um, and. Um, hopefully get it done and that way I can get it out to you guys and then we can just, we can just vote and then I can get the minutes to Jimmy.
When do you need to get the budget to camp?
Uh, next week.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, it'd be great if, you know, we can have it over the weekend and then we could probably get it off your plate by Monday. If everybody's gonna be around this weekend, I mean, you know, checking.
Yep.
That'd be great.
All right.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Buddy, that that, these are always long meetings. In some regards, it is a lot better that we're not having to drive home.
Yes, yes, for sure. For sure.
Okay, well, good, good work, and I think that um. Uh, Jen, you know, I thi- I think that a big thing out of this is that, you know, we're we. We don't want you to be. In a position where you're trying to stay to um. Some things that we've been doing in the past, yet at the same time trying to expand. And make better the the overall uh experience. Um, but but with that comes, you know, we gotta do some thing to to do things differently and better. We have to do things differently and better. So, you know, that that's part of, um, I think that the fees conversation and and our concerns about. Going too high with Town Hall, uh, the finance group, uh, you know, right off the bat.
Okay. I won't scare him this year, maybe next time.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see, we'll see. Let's see how it works.
I asked for a win.
They may be scaring us.
Baby steps, Jen, baby steps.
You know, I I came in, there's been two floods, you know, it's. I don't even know how to do baby steps at this point. I need a new floor, I need a new roof.
No, you need to, you need to tread water.
Build a bark with our new glow forge.
Baptism by fire, Jen.
That always.
No, all good ideas, all good stuff. It it's just, you know, no matter of how much and how how many and. And, you know, also getting more support from our constituency.
Yeah.
Because we've been. You know, we we we've offered a great, a great opportunities in the past and we're offering great opportunities now, but just. You know, we we wanna continue to get better and offer more, and that just means. More with more comes money. And more comes work. And we've got you for the hour, so, you know, let's give you the support you need.
Great, thank you. All right, so.
So, um, let's see, I guess. I'm I'm going to ask, uh, can I have someone make a, if there's nothing else or any other business that anyone would like to talk about? Hold on. Okay, uh, can I get a second on that?
I second that motion.
All in favor of adjournment? Okay, keep your eye on your on your um emails. And Jen, if there's anything that you need to talk about with me or anything at all, don't hesitate to pick up the phone. Better to call me on my cell than to send something in my email cuz my phone is. A a bit problematic in getting it's um when I'm not in the house, getting emails, so do you have my cell number?
I don't.
Two oh three. Seven three three.
Write it down, Bill.
Two oh three, seven three three, two four five seven.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, okay, everybody.
Okay.
Rest of the night and we'll. We'll see in two weeks.
Good night, everybody.